If you'd like to come off and...
Love to hear from you. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to thank you guys for the recognition. I really appreciate it. And thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve our veterans. I love what I do. So yeah, that's all I wanted to say.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Going to Naco and stuff, veterans are such an important part in every county in this country. And I've got to say, thank you very much for what you do. And as a veteran, I know Dean and I really appreciate it.
Lots of people depend on you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I wasn't worried.
Yep. All right, that takes us to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for September 1st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,140,710.29.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
You know, our bills are a little high this week. But includes, we've got $500,000 in jail healthcare. We've got $230,000 in highway trucks. We've got $118,000 in pre-trial to USD. We've got 11 occurrences of decedent transport at $400 each. And we did also have a funeral at $2,000. There are a lot of things that the county covers. And I'm not even talking yet about rent and utilities.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are reports. I'd commend for your review. A lot of good reports in there from the Mobile Crisis Team, the Minnehaha County Highway, and we have auditor's account for both June and July. That takes us to personnel actions. I consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are abatements, and there are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. That takes us to item nine. We have two different petitions for compromise of lien. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning. Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. The first item is a request for a compromise of lien. The action requested is to release the petitioner from the responsibility of the joint lien with payment of $1,170.14, leaving the remainder of the lien with a balance of $1,220 in the name of the petitioner's ex-spouse. The petitioner is in the process of buying a home and is expecting to close on September 22nd. She is hoping you'll consider her request to compromise lien DPNO 28628. The balance on the lien is $2,390.14 and represents poor relief and legal representation recorded between 1992 through 2019. The couple divorced on March 25th, 2010, so the petitioner is offering to pay all the fees during the period they were married in order to move forward with the purchase of the home, including the $87.20 dental fee for her ex-spouse. She believes she should not be held responsible for any fees recorded between 2012 through 2019 after they were divorced.
All right. Any questions for Melinda? You always do such a good job. I appreciate it. So if the applicant is here, she's welcome to speak. She's not required to speak. She can speak from her chair and not identify herself.
I'm here. I don't want to speak.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? If not, Commissioner Karski?
I think this is a very fair offer to remove this lien, and I'm in favor of it. I'd make the motion to approve it.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Benega?
Well, I would say that I, when I read through this, I was appreciative of the fact that you were coming forward and being responsible. I would hope that your ex-spouse would be responsible as you are. But thank you for doing what you've done.
I think we'd all echo those comments. So, anyone else? Not roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item is DPNO 40948. Melinda?
This request for compromise of lien is to compromise and release the lien in full with no payment. The petitioner is in the process of refinancing her home and is hoping she can close on a $35,000 mortgage no later than September 24th, 2020. She's asking that you consider her request to have lien DPNO 240948. That seems a little long. Pardon me. 40948 in the amount of $1,419.40 eliminated. She explains in her narrative that the school incident in which her 11-year-old son was involved should have been dismissed and should not have required juvenile court, and that the children should have been supervised while on the playground, therefore, before their misbehavior had escalated. She is married, but explains that they each live in their own residence due to health issues. She does not work, but does receive $791 a month in social security benefits, along with some recent child support. She claims an annual income of $24,000, $152,167.84 in assets, and $90,279.20 in liabilities.
All right. Any questions for Melinda? All right. Once again, if the applicant is here, she's welcome to stand up and speak. You don't have to identify yourself or provide your name, but you could provide any comments you'd like to provide.
I have a lot to say. I just, there's so much to say. It's about the attorney and about the mistreatment I got from the kid's attorney as well, and how this started. My kid just turned 11 and he was in fifth grade, and I, the report hit the school supervisor, this other kid was all going to...
Okay, you know what? You don't need to go into the depths of the facts if you just want to provide us a little thing. Anything that you haven't already provided in writing, we've had an opportunity to read what you provided in writing.
Just about the juvenile system in general. Aside that my kid reported at school and he didn't assault. He wasn't supervised the right way, which I normally have him writing, because I'm not necessarily, he wrote that part.
We've had an opportunity to read everything. The commissioners here are really very responsible about reading the information provided.
But there's a problem with the juvenile system. The fact that parents can't be present when the kid's being represented by a lawyer, and you don't know what they're doing to your kid when you pick him for an hour. And then, when I was at the, when I did get to be present, he mocked me in front of the kids, kept saying, "I don't care, I don't care, I don't care." And, and then, and then I know of another situation where another kid had several charges, and my kid never had any other charges.
Okay, this is not indictment of the juvenile justice system. This is about your particular debt that you owe, so.
I'm just making the point that the other kid had off, they could have drafted this with my kid. And the other kid, I asked the prosecutor, this other kid had assaulted my kid, why they couldn't take that to trial. And he said, "To avoid the cost of a trial." In my situation, they didn't care about the trial because I didn't help. And I feel like they were trying to, I feel like that's why they didn't care about the cost of the trial. And the judge is the one that says that the school system has failed to supervise, and that's why I'm asking for this to be moved, I guess. And I'd like to explain more, but I know you don't have time for that. So I just wanted to just...
It's not a question of time. It's just making sure that we, you know, that we limit it to the pertinent facts and that we don't repeat things that we've already been provided.
I just felt like part of the bill was the lawyer constantly saying, "I don't care," and then not talking. He told me I could call, and then he never returned my calls. And in the end, he said that he purposely never called me back because he didn't want to meet with me. And so why should I have the bill when I can't meet with the lawyer, when I can't talk to him? And they take their kid for an hour, and you don't know what they're doing to your kid. And I guess, at the trial, he took my kid in another room, and I went to follow, and he said, "Get out." He yelled that out loud. And I found out he was asking my kid at the trial if he still wanted to be guilty, or if he wanted to be guilty. And my kid said, "No, I wouldn't want to do that." So, I feel like, I got, he got a bad attorney, but he was, he got a long case attorney, but I personally didn't like him, and now he's a judge. And I just really wanted to bring this, like the Me Too movement, I wanted to tell about this, because I felt like I was being mocked and everything with this. When the lawyer and I were alone, but when I went later, after the child met with him, my husband, he's a totally different person. So that's all I can say.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Just looking at the record, I do see where the applicant has made payments in the past. And I know that we very much appreciate those payments. We don't charge any interest on the amounts that are owed. That said, you know, meeting with the child without the parent, sometimes the parent is a, has problems that are causing problems. And you cannot expect a child to tell you what's going on at home if mom is, or dad is sitting there with them. I would also say that the rates that we charge for our attorney representation are well below the amount that a private attorney would charge. And you would, of course, have the option of hiring a private attorney. Additionally, it seems like your gripe might be with the school system. And you should maybe talk to them about the situation where they did nothing to protect your child. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll make, I'll make a comment.
Okay.
This, you know, this is kind of a difficult situation. Obviously, you're unhappy with what happened. But I think in a normal situation, we usually only take a compromise of 50% payment of the lien. And I, because when we do court representation, like Commissioner Barth said, we already discount the price significantly from what a real, not real, what an outside attorney, a private attorney would cost you. And so I would make a motion that we would compromise this lien for half of the payment, just because that's what we do. I don't know if I'll get a second or not, so.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
It's kind of a difficult one to process, just because it is a juvenile. And one of the interesting aspects of our criminal justice system, or society as a whole, is that parents are responsible for the debts of their children, or for anything that their children do. Whether we agree with it or not, it is the way it is. You know, this is three years ago, and I'm glad to hear the young man is not in any further trouble. And, you know, based on that, I'm willing to make a concession for half of what we paid and move forward with this.
Commissioner Barth?
And I would also say that having made some payments towards this in the past shows good faith, and I will support the motion. I totally agree with the comments. These are never easy cases, but since we are responsible for our own children, and frankly, the taxpayers are paying for the other half, I believe that's a fair settlement. And the details of what have been submitted, I also agree there is some responsibility maybe with the school system's supervision, but that's not part of our process. So I would agree on the 50% settlement.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can I just add one more thing? Sorry to interrupt.
I think, I think we're done. I'm sorry. We've, we've, we have a motion and a second. You had your opportunity to speak, so I think we're done. Sorry. All right. Motion and a second. Further comments? Roll call vote, please.
Would it be okay to get a point of clarification before I do roll call?
Sure.
Okay. Is it for 50% of the current total, or 50% of what was paid to the attorneys?
Percent of the current total is what I intended.
Okay, thank you.
Which would be consistent with our past practices.
Thank you. All right. So in that case, is it okay to do roll call?
Yes.
So Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Melinda can help you. All right. So that takes us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak about any item. If you'd just come forward, give your name and your address, please. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairwoman Bender and members of the commission. Nikki Gronley, 24620 479th Avenue, Del Rapid, South Dakota. And I just want to, first of all, start out with a compliment to our auditor, Bob Litz, who took the responsibility, took the information from the absentee task force to try to get ballot boxes out around the county so that those who are high-risk don't have to risk going to the polls on the day of election. I am, however, saddened that the mayor has shut this down, and that it affects all of the county by doing that. Someone, you know, being someone who works with people who are high-risk, being someone who has family members that are high-risk, I worry. And it concerns me that a mayor that I don't get to vote for, in a community I don't live in, also affects my community of Del Rapids and their access to the ballot box, which I think is just so important. And under this pandemic, I just have great concern for especially the elderly, who we've seen 35,000 people have requested absentee ballots. And I think to get quicker results, accurate results, having those boxes out there is just huge for the county to be able to manage those. And so I'm hoping that our auditor maybe will continue to push that issue and consider getting it out into the county as opposed to shutting this down because the Sioux Falls mayor has. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Absolutely. Come forward. Just give your name and your address, please. Thank you.
John, do you have a handout?
Yes, I do.
Why don't you give me a slab of them? Thank you. Okay.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to come and bring this to your guys' attention because I...
Madam Chair, he has to identify.
Yeah. If you could just give your name and your address, please.
Yeah. John Parker, 2408 East Benson Street, Minnehaha Conservation District, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. So, the purpose of me coming in was, is that about three weeks ago, I'd called Jeff up, and this is on behalf of the Conservation District now, that we were thinking about doing some changes in our location up on, as you can see there, on 112072nd Avenue, constitute some office space, hook up to city sewer, put in a bathroom, do some things. Then it was also brought to my attention that there might be a chance that the county was going to build an alternative site to the highway department. So with that, I was thinking that, talking to Jeff, that there was an opportunity that maybe the district could be included in the talks to see if there was a location that you guys choose, which I see you're going to talk about later, and maybe have the opportunity to present in further detail some requirement sizes and things like that. So the purpose of the map was to just show you the location. Like I said, we have water there and electricity, but we have no offices, and we have, don't have any bathrooms. So those would be improvements that we'd have to make. So we just thought, if there was a chance to jump in front, rather than try to reconfigure our footprint there, that we might be included with you guys in a location that you so desire around the county someplace, so.
All right. Well, thank you. We do have a committee that's working on a highway, and we haven't made any decisions about locations or anything.
Okay.
But if you could provide your contact information to Carol Muller, our administrative assistant here, then someone will be in touch with you.
Okay.
So thank you.
Yep. Thanks.
All right. Is there anyone else here this morning for public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Just want to make sure I give folks out in the hallway a chance. Anyone else? So that takes us to regular business. First item is a budget hearing for fiscal year 2021. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Before you today is the budget that has been slightly revised since you passed it as a provisional budget, the end of, on July 28th. The things that have changed, maybe I'll start first with the things that did not change. The two things that we were kind of anticipating might, might impact this number would be workers' comp and centrally assessed utilities. That's a number that we get from the state very end of August. Those numbers were inconsequential and determined that no budget adjustments were needed for those. Additional expenses include $50,000 as a contingency for a triage center operating costs, $100,000 for mental health holds exams that we're in discussion about, and increased building insurance expense by $30,000 in anticipation of increased premiums. So the total amount of the key, of the budget is that it stands at $113,293,582. The one number I want to talk about right now is the general fund cash applied. That's a number that you guys watch very closely and continue to monitor during the budget process. That number stands at 5.3 million. It is under the 8% goal, as that is percentage, as that is a percentage for a maximum amount, has worked very well in the past years. The budget includes taxes levied of $58,847,989. This number does not include any additional opt-out dollars being utilized for fiscal year '21. In July of 2019, the commission passed an opt-out for $6.5 million. Last year, you accessed 1.75 million of that opt-out, leaving 4.75 available for future years. This isn't, I think this is an amazing budget for what you guys had to work with this year. You're not using any additional opt-out dollars. The cash applied is at a very reasonable amount that's out of there. It also includes 20 million in capital projects for replacement and renovation of county facilities. The county has bond debt that expires next year, and we're able to take that off, put new renovations in place, all without changing those tax dollars at all for any of the public. A few things that we do have in there also would be a health insurance adjustment of 15%, a matrix adjustment of 2% for non-elected personnel. We have added two positions, totally, totally new ones. One is a paralegal within the public defender's office, and a correctional systems officer within the jail. In addition, the one thing that I guess I didn't put in here is that you've also budgeted $750,000 as a number for fut, to, in terms of switching over from just a fully paying out cash on payroll to doing an accrued system. It's a good thing for us to do, and you can make it work this year.
Carol, and I apologize, because I probably should have emailed you over the weekend. We did visit with Craig on Friday because the bond that, that resolution that we passed indicated it was 25 million in capital projects.
Oh, you're right. Thank you very much. Yes.
So just wanted to clarify that. Anything else? Any comments or questions for Carol?
This is a public hearing, so you'll have the opportunity, if anybody wants to speak about that, to, to do so. The one thing I would look to you is for some direction. Next week, you are not meeting. You have the week off because you will be at the South Dakota Association of, of County Commissioners. This meeting here in Sioux Falls next week. So you have the 22nd and the 29th. I think I got those dates correct in my head. I live by Tuesdays on my calendar. The 20th, the 29th is the day that you would pass the final budget. And that's a date that's required. Do you want to see this budget again on the 22nd or not? That would be my only question for you, if you want to do that or not.
Why don't we go through the public hearing part of it, and we can make that determination at the end. So this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this budget that's been proposed? Anybody here to speak in favor of it? Anyone here who's opposed to this proposed budget? So as opposed to Lincoln County, we don't have hundreds of people here today, apparently, to talk about our budget, which is, I hope, a vote of confidence in what we put together. All right. Since there's nobody here to speak either in favor or against, looking for direction from the commission about whether we want to look at the commission, at this budget again on the 22nd, or if we're fined, taking the final vote at the last meeting of the month.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
Not to quibble, but I still believe that ambulance is underfunded. And, you know, I kind of wonder where we're at with the, the federal money that's been pushed towards us by the governor, and what is she going to do with the $900 million she still has in, to hand out? I know the legislature is talking about a special session to determine allocations on that, but my hope would be that ambulance is an issue for them, because it is an issue for us, in my view.
Thank you. Any other comments, or any, or any feedback about whether people want to see the budget on the 22nd, or if we could just bring it back on the 29th? Since there's so little discussion about the budget today, I'm not sure why we would need to see it on the 22nd. We can always, if there's a change of mind, we can certainly have a groundswell and, and bring it forward on the 22nd. But... bring it forward on the 22nd, but I'm inclined to not bring it forward until the 29th. Commissioner Benega.
I would agree with those comments. I think that if we hear something between now and then, we certainly would want to do that, but at this point, I have not had any feedback.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think so, we're just looking for direction, so. All right, thank you all very much. That takes us to item 11, which is a briefing on the MacArthur SJC supplemental grant application. We are honored to have Chief Judge Hellman with us, and Aaron Serska and Commissioner Heiburger are all. This is just a briefing, and we will, this will be brought forward for approval on the 22nd, I believe.
Yes, it will. Thank you all for having me here today. My name is Robin Hellman, I'm the presiding judge here for the Second Circuit, which encompasses Minnehaha and Lincoln County. Commissioner Heiburger and myself are the co-chairs of the Safety and Justice Challenge Implementation Team, and I'm here today to discuss the strategies and successes of the initial implementation grant, and to discuss our proposal for the second grant application, which is due at the end of this month. I think Commissioner Heiburger and myself are both going to be gone on September 22nd, when the proposal will be presented to the commission, so I wanted to be here today to give you just some perspective from the committee itself, focus primarily on what has transpired over the initial portion of the grant, to tell you what some of our successes and challenges have been, and to just give you a glimpse of what you can expect on the 22nd, as far as the request for the second cycle of the grant. The implementation grant, the first cycle that we received in September of 2018, we identified some key strategies that were identified to collaborate with our community to make it a safer and more effective system, and we identified three strategies. Pre-trial arrest and pre-trial diversion strategies, we wanted to improve case processing and make ourselves more efficient, and we also wanted to enhance services for people with mental illness or substance abuse issues that are involved in the justice system. So I'll take each of those three topic areas. Our first cycle strategy was a pre-arrest and pre-trial diversion strategy. One of the first things we came up with was the in-custody review team. The in-custody review team is a team that meets weekly. It's comprised of representatives of all stakeholders, which include the court, prosecutors, defense attorneys, pre-trial staff, the jail, court services, and our community alliance program. Every other week, this group of people come together to review all of the defendants who are held in custody in the Minnehaha County Jail for more than 14 days and have a bond of $7,500 cash or surety or less. This review team has been in operation since September of 2019. Their goal is to release people for whom there are options available in the community, and also to make sure that no case falls through the cracks. The team puts together a list every time they meet of individuals who are in custody, what they're in custody for, what their bond status is. They review that, and they try to come up with strategies. Can this person be released? And if this person cannot be released, what can we do to more efficiently process them through the system? And what we've seen through that in-custody review team is that we are seeing a great success in moving people through the system more quickly. I think folks in our criminal justice system here in Minnehaha County would say that we keep the people in jail who need to be there, so the ones who need to be there, who meet these criteria, we try to process them through the system faster. The other thing that we've established is our pre-trial services. We began providing the pre-trial risk assessment in May of 2018. The PSA, pre-trial risk assessment produces a score that represents the likelihood that a defendant who is released before trial will commit a new crime or fail to appear at court. The PSA also produces a flag when someone has an elevated risk of committing a crime of violence before, or when, if they are released. One of the huge benefits that I see with the pre-sentence investigation, or, excuse me, these PSA scores, is each day a judge is presiding over initial appearances or felony arraignments, we're given a copy of this binder. We also have this information available on a dashboard that is called Open Lattice. So for those who are not as well-versed at working with the computer, we have this in written form. For those who are well-versed in working with the computer, they have the Open Lattice system to look at. It's all in one location, and what I think our judges find most valuable is that it contains a criminal history of defendants who are before us. That way, we don't have to rely on the attorneys to have a criminal history or to have an updated criminal history, and so that's one of the things that I benefit from the most. One of our magistrate judges, Sarah Pokala, who really loves the Open Lattice system, shared this with me. She said, "Open Lattice has been a tremendous time-saving tool for me. I find the organizational structure of the criminal histories to be particularly beneficial. Also, the few times I have provided feedback on potential changes to the webpage, Open Lattice has been responsive. The PSA score is most useful in situations where my bond decision is a close call, and it's nice to have quantifiable data to aid those decisions." Both preparing these reports and designing the Open Lattice system are things that have been funded through this first round of grant funding through the MacArthur Foundation. We've also had opportunities since this program was put in place back in September of 2018 to make some modifications to the system. For instance, we used to get PSA scores for defendants even on the weekends, so if someone was arrested and in custody, every weekend, a judge has to review whether or not that person should be released before they make their initial appearance. We decided that the time spent creating those PSAs on the weekend would be better served for our pre-trial staff actually supervising people pre-trial. So we modified some of the, what we were doing with the PSAs to create more space for the pre-trial staff to actually do pre-trial supervision. The pre-trial supervision criteria is determined by somebody's PSA score, or a specific criteria that is outlined by the judge. There are some people who are released from custody, and they're released on pre-trial supervision. That means that they check in a certain number of times per week, or a certain number times per month, either in person or through other electronic means with our pre-trial staff. This is an option that our judges have, where we used to maybe hold somebody in custody if we were afraid that they might not appear. Now we have one additional tool in our toolbox to decide, perhaps I can release this person on pre-trial services into the community to see if they can maintain contact with the pre-trial staff. The whole goal is to make sure that they don't commit a new crime and that they appear for their court date, and I think that we've found some success. Since pre-trial supervision began earlier this year, we've had 167 defendants released from custody on pre-trial supervision. Now, some of those didn't get out of jail because they still had a bond put in place, but 126 did get out of jail, and 10 have successfully completed the program. Those 126 folks for the duration of the time that they were on pre-trial results in 5,486 pre-trial days. Now, I can't stand here today and tell you that that has saved us over $5,000, $5,000 days in jail at $93 a day, but that's something that we're continuing to look at to determine how successful is this program. But having pre-trial services available to us has certainly given us one additional tool in our toolbox. What's also important to note about the pre-trial staff is all of the people who are on pre-trial services, and every individual who gets a PSA score, is given court reminders, either by text or by email, of what their next court dates are. So one of the goals of pre-trial, again, is to ensure that people come to court, and providing these court reminders is something that's very essential. One of the third strategies that we had was our diversion or deflection efforts, and our diversion and deflection efforts were diverted and deflected by COVID, so we are hoping to carry over those diversion and deflection efforts into the second cycle of funding. We did make a couple of important trips, or at least we planned one and we went on one. A team from the Safety and Justice Challenge Committee went to visit the Blue Earth Mankato area to look at a diversion project that they have called the Yellow Line Project. It's a project that's designed to provide an early response for individuals with acute or chronic mental or chemical health problems who become involved with law enforcement and who are not a danger to the public. We sent this team there to figure out what this Yellow Line Project is, and to determine whether or not any of that project would be valuable coming back to Sioux Falls for deflection or diversion purposes. We also had a larger team that was set to go to Tucson this April to see the diversion programs that they have from all levels in Tucson. However, COVID came into the picture, and naturally, that travel was canceled as a result. So we hope that our diversion opportunities will be enhanced by the opening of the triage center next year, and our diversion programs, as I said, will be carried into, hopefully, that second cycle of funding. Our second strategy was improvements to case processing and case efficiency. What we did in February of 2019 is we got stakeholders from everywhere, the court system, the jail, attorneys, court services officers, and we reviewed from start to finish between 70 and 100 cases as they progressed through the court system. We took a look at each individual case, each hearing that was held, and each thing that became an impediment to that case getting through the system efficiency, efficiently. And we tried to identify what some of those barriers were in our case processing, and we identified about eight different areas that we thought we could all do better, and we implemented those eight different areas as part of the stress test. And that included getting defendants set on calendars sooner for pleas and sentencings. It included getting pre-sentence investigation reports done sooner, and a way of expediting our grand jury transcripts. So we identified the areas that we could do better in, and we implemented the strategies to make that possible. Another program we came up with for case efficiency was a program we called Fast Track. Fast Track is a process that we developed to address the population that has a drug charge, is released from custody, and continues to pick up subsequent drug charges while that first case is pending. Traditionally, it's not unusual to see someone who picks up a drug case and 18 months later finally has that first case resolved, because in the interim, they've picked up four or five different cases. What the Fast Track process is designed to do is to get somebody in within 45 days to be pled and sentenced and placed on probation 45 days from their arrest, with the goal that we would not have that person in the community committing new offenses, that we'd get them through the system, at least on that first case, more efficiency, efficiently, hopefully get them on probation supervision, get them into a treatment program, and avoid additional cases in the future. So we implemented that Fast Track case, and we also developed something called the UJS Campsite, which is a dashboard specifically for the judges on the felony criminal rotation here in Minnehaha County. It was developed by the Unified Judicial System, and it's an application that design, that's designed to help the judges track their cases. It gives us information about the length of time cases have been pending, about the length of time revocations have been pending, how many cases are assigned to us each month, and how quickly we're getting those cases through the system. So it's a tool that we are all able to use to look at our cases and decide if there's something that's been lingering out there, what can we do to move that case along. So those are the strategies that we have implemented so far in case processing. The third item of the first cycle of strategies is the enhanced services for people with mental illness or substance abuse issues. One of the things that the grant has funded is one-half of a full-time employee for the alliance program here in Minnehaha County, and we hope to carry that through in the next cycle as well. We've also sent a number of people for training on substance use and behavioral health trainings, including our new two judges who are presiding over the mental health court here in Minnehaha County. And if you'll recall, the Innovation Grant that Minnehaha County first received from the MacArthur Foundation is what actually provided the foundation for the Community Triage Center project. The grant funded the Sequential Intercept Modeling Map, and the implementation grant continues to fund the staff time that is needed to assist that project and get it running. There were two things that came up during the course of the first two years of our implementation grant that we didn't originally anticipate, but have been outgrowths of the program, and I think they've been very good ones. The first is that we developed the Coordinating Council, which is now known as the Sioux Empire Leadership Council. That council is a forum to discuss the systemic challenges where practical to coordinate activity among various agencies and programs. Its idea is to identify common goals and priorities within our community, to implement strategies, and to monitor the performance of the overall quality of life for individuals in Minnehaha and Lincoln County. So the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant supports the efforts of our coordinating council that meets monthly, and it also supports us with staff to implement some of the strategies. The second thing that came out of the implementation grant that we didn't initially anticipate was an emergence of an emphasis on racial and ethnic disparities. As part of the Sioux Empire Leadership Council, we had become, begun discussing a, holding a big table event back last fall. Obviously, COVID delayed some of those efforts, and the big table event was finally held in Ju, in July, excuse me, I think it was June 30th, and it was a wild success. The Sioux Empire Leadership Council is now accepting applications from community members to establish a community engagement committee that will initially look at three topics: youth, justice-impacted individuals, and representation of diverse individuals in community leadership roles. The grant has funded half the cost of our newly hired community engagement quarter, coordinator, who will also support these efforts going forward. So that, in a nutshell, is just a brief overview of the first cycle strategies that we had with the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant. The second portion of the grant, the application is due in September, and we have identified five essential goals that are really extensions of the goals that we identified during the first two years. We want to continue to gain information from data. The United, the Unified Judicial System is about to dump a huge load of data on the data people who are funded by the Safety and Justice Challenge Grant, and they're going to look at that data, and then they're going to continue to receive updates of that data each month, and the goal will be to look for trends in information to illuminate who goes to jail and for what crimes. We anticipate using the Safety and Justice Challenge funds to develop a dashboard that'll be related to the LINK, which is the Community Triage Center, and that would provide immediate and up-to-date information to law enforcement on the street when they come into contact with individuals who may be a candidate for the LINK or for jail. This dashboard that we hope to create will give them that up-to-date information so that they can determine what capacity the LINK has, and in what areas, and what capacity the jail has, and law enforcement would have that information on their initial encounter. We also want to continue to work on our case processing efficiency. One of the things that COVID has resulted in is a large number of people failing to appear for court dates. So one of the strategies that we want to focus on in the second phase of the grant is to work on further strategies to reduce failures to appear, such as expanding our court reminders that are sent by the pre-trial staff. We'd like to work on a way to send those to all individuals who have court dates, regardless of whether or not they're on pre-trial services. The third goal of the second implementation grant would be to continue to work on our substance use disorder and mental health goals. Obviously, the LINK opening up in February will meet a number of these goals, but between now and then, we will continue to identify the gaps in our community and to look for resources to fill them, such as the COSAP grant that has already been applied for that would provide an adult diversion coordinator for the Minnehaha County State's Attorney's The fourth goal that we have for the second phase of the grant is maintaining the changes that have been made as a result of COVID. COVID caused a number of rapid changes at the courthouse. I was here a few months ago to highlight some of those changes for you, but I think three things are noteworthy here. First of all, within the space of about two weeks at the courthouse, we tripled our capacity to hold remote court hearings. Since that time, we have discovered that remote court hearings are beneficial for participants, they're also beneficial for the court, and it allows us to be more effective. participants, they're also beneficial for the court, and it allows us to be more efficient. So to continue those efforts, we've received funding through the Unified Judicial System to permanently wire eight of our courtrooms for Zoom proceedings in the future, and we think that that will aid us in being efficient. And through the grant, we're going to look for strategies and ways to provide that services to people who might not be able to access Zoom technology outside of the courthouse. So that's one of the things that we hope we can look at through the second phase of the grant. The second thing is that the UJS is developing a web application that will allow individuals to enter their name and date of birth into a website and to immediately receive information on what all of their court dates are, what those cases are, and what those charges are. That's a program that we've just identified funding for, and we hope will be completed through the end of the year, and we hope to use the Safety and Justice Challenge funds to determine the efficiency and the effectiveness of that website. The third change that we'd like to, and I think maybe we've already even accomplished, is COVID resulted in a modification of our bond schedule very quickly for the entire circuit. This was an area that we'd planned to address through the Safety and Justice Challenge, but we didn't anticipate addressing it quite so quickly. In March of 2020, I think we addressed our bond changes in the space of about 36 hours. The pandemic forced those changes, and since then, we have made some of those changes permanent. In fact, all but three of the changes we made in March have been made permanent changes to our bond schedule. So we're going to continue to use the data to tell us what effect these changes will have in the second implementation of the grant, and the funds will help us support those evaluation efforts. The last goal that we want to address with the second round of funding will be racial and ethnic fairness, and this is really where the rubber meets the road in the second phase of funding. We propose utilizing grant funding mostly in this area. Our proposal for the second round of funding would continue to fund the Community Engagement Coordinator. We propose using the funding to support a leadership program for justice-involved individuals and also a program designed specifically at Native American Cultural Programming for people with substance use disorders and mental health. We also anticipate using the funding to attend training and conferences in the area of racial and ethnic-centered fairness. So that, in a nutshell, is what we believe that we have accomplished through the first round of funding and what we hope to achieve if we're able to submit the application for the second round of funding. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Commissioner Bar.
You know, one of the things I think we need in this state is universal, low-cost internet service. I mean, for those folks that live in Harding County or rural Minnehaha County, they need to have an internet system that they can connect to your Zoom calls, and I hope that we spend some millions of dollars of the money that the state has on that. I would also say, my reading is that we're not the only county, only state, only country that has this issue with racial disparity. In China, they were commenting that people that come in from the boonies get more harsher sentences than people that the judge knows their family here in town. And so it's something that's happening all over the world and that we should be maybe seeing what they're doing, and thank you very much for what you are doing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Benega.
I have one question that I'm sure you probably can't answer but are anticipating this happening, but everything I read talks about the growth in mental health and drug-related issues because of COVID. Have you guys made any projections on what kind of growth you're expecting? Because I think we're all expecting some significant change that's going to be positive in the wrong direction.
Right. I don't know that I can tell you we have any statistics on the type of cases. I can tell you that we do expect that onslaught. I think we are already seeing the effects of some of that through what we have as motions to revoke in the court system. And obviously, you know, COVID has seriously impacted the needs of people who have substance use disorders and mental health conditions because they haven't been able to see their treatment providers, participate in programming, participate in testing, or see their court services officers in the ways that they traditionally had. And I don't think we'll have any idea for quite some time the impact that that has on those individuals. So, you know, there may be some opportunities with this grant funding in the future to look at some of those issues, but I think one of the things that we've already identified, or two of them, are a leadership program for justice-involved individuals as well as programming that's specifically designed to meet the cultural needs of Native Americans. That's something that we've been investigating and trying to find the right program for quite some time. So we're hoping that with some of this additional funding, we can try and fill some of those gaps that are going to be created or have been created.
Well, your success at this point, if you want to call it a success, it'd be nice if you went out of business, but that's never going to happen.
Unfortunately, I don't think that.
No, but the success that you've had is impressive, frankly, on diversion of what's going on currently. And thankfully, I guess I'm very appreciative of the fact that we're ahead of that growth problem, and it seems like maybe we have some of the answers to the solution or solutions that we're going to be facing. So thanks for the effort.
Commissioner Karski.
Thank you, Judge. My understanding of this whole program is that it's pretty much voluntary for the judges individually to accept the direction that you've been given them, and they've truly embraced it, and it's successful because of that. Is that the correct perception?
I think it is. I mean, that's only part of it. The judges utilizing these services is one thing. Then the staff that we actually have to make that a reality, such as the pre-trial staff. I can say to someone, I'm going to place you on pre-trial services, but it's really the connection that that pre-trial staff makes with that defendant, how they explain what pre-trial services is, how they explain the importance of appearing for their next court date, and having that relationship with that staff, I think, is really what makes the program successful.
Thank you for your leadership. Erin and Commissioner Heiburger, I know, and just so many people involved in making this a reality, and it's making a difference for a lot of people, so thank you.
It really does, because we have this Safety and Justice Challenge implementation team, but, you know, we get together to do so many things that aren't directly related to the Safety and Justice Challenge just because we know it makes sense and it's going to get the right thing done. So for instance, one of the problems that we've encountered is defendants who are arrested give an officer on the street a phone number. And we were releasing the defendants using that phone number for those court reminders. We found out in almost every instance, the phone number that was given to law enforcement wasn't the right phone number, wasn't the right person's phone, and so we had to come together and figure out ways, how do we get a phone number for someone to provide them information on when their court date is? So when you put a couple of people in a room together, and we've all put on our thinking caps, we figure out ways to address some of these challenges. So it goes way beyond what the goals of the Safety and Justice Challenge are.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I was just, it's kind of the same thing. Judge did a great job of presenting. I read through it several times this weekend, so I knew where you were going, but you did a great job of presenting it. But we meet at least twice a month, Erin Surtzka and the judge and myself, to go through things, but that's just the tip of the iceberg, like she said, of so many other things that are going on that you're not aware of. And even to pull it all into a PowerPoint and try to explain it to you, there's so much going on behind the scenes that you're not going to be aware of unless somebody says, we did this and this and this. And I think they've made a huge impact, and I think they've made an impact on our jail population more than we know. So, and the goal really is to get them to court, but also to keep those people out of jail safely and keep them in their homes and keep them working and keep them paying their property taxes and to keep them maybe on the path of staying out of trouble. So it's been a great team to work on. I've learned a lot myself, so.
Any other comments or questions?
Madam Chair. If we did away with crime, we'd still need judges for adoptions and weddings.
We would, yes.
Well, thank you very much. I mean, and thank you to the MacArthur Foundation, honestly, because their seed money has really been able to provide the basis for us to be able to explore some of these different options. I think this was a great presentation this morning, just to show folks that, you know, we aren't sitting on our heels and happily just arresting people and throwing them in jail. We are really looking at the systemic problems in the system and trying to address the issues that folks are dealing with that get them involved in the system in the first place. So thank you very much. I really appreciate you taking the time to come over here.
Thank you. I'm sorry I can't be here on the 22nd, but then Erin will have some more detail about our second round of funding and the strategies. Thank you for letting me be here.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming over because I know you got to head back to go to court, so thank you. All right, so that takes us to item 12, which is to authorize the chair to sign the Joint Public Safety Answering Point, PSAP, agreement with the City of Sioux Falls. Carol Mueller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. The action before you is to authorize the chairperson to sign the Joint Public Safety Answering Point Agreement with the City of Sioux Falls. You'll hear us refer to the PSAP, and that stands for that Public Safety Answering Point. The City of Sioux Falls is building, constructing a new public safety training facility in northeast Sioux Falls, and it is proposed that a new Metro 911 facility could be added to that. And attached is the joint you have before you, a hard copy of the proposed Joint Participation Agreement for your consideration. You also had a chance to review several of the attachments. Attachment A being the one that's most important to us is because that's the FFNE. The funding is that we would budget $2.15 million, which would cover the FFNE fixtures, furnitures, and expenses. The city would construct it, we would take care of the FFNE. And the largest FFNE expense is $1.268, which would be that whole radio console, I want to call it the brains of the system, that each person needs to have. The county cannot bond or use building funds for FFNE, hence an appropriation will be made as part of the fiscal year '22 budget. So a year from now, you'll be approving that. We will make a lump sum payment to Metro 911 on or before January 31st, 2022. Purchases will be made by Metro, and dollars that aren't utilized will be returned back to the county. The last thing I just want to mention is that the current PSAP or Metro in the county's public safety building will then become the backup center, which will be much more robust than what currently exists down the street from us. So that is a good thing for us to go through and do. So I would ask if you have any questions for us. Scott McMahon from 911 happens to be here today. Two of you sat on the Metro Council and had a chance to go over this last week also with discussion.
I clarify for the public that we use all these terms interchangeably, and they used to confuse me exceedingly, but Metro and the PSAP and 911, they're all the same folks. So Commissioner Barth.
Has our State's Attorney's Office reviewed the resolution?
Yes, and the copy didn't get included to you. I've got a copy of it, so, yes, the attorneys from the city and the county worked very closely on that.
Commissioner Karski.
Couple things. Thank you, Carol. It took a lot of work, sitting down at the table with the city and the county and hashing out all the details and making sure that, you know, everything's in the right place. This is a great agreement from my perspective and being on the Metro Communications Board for a couple of reasons. One, we're not a minority owner in a building, the new facility. I think that's important. We're not involved in the construction or the ownership of the building. We are going to buy the equipment. Dr. Scott, Director of Metro Communications, at our last meeting, he assured me that the equipment we're going to be buying, the technology will be current, even though it's two years down the road. You always worry about that because technology changes so rapidly, but I guess the agreement with the state makes it so that we're always getting the newest and greatest and best. So this is a great agreement, and I just, a lot of work went into it by staff and by Scott, really hammering the numbers down. We've had a long-term relationship with the city where it's kind of a 75-25 split, so we're trying to keep that true to form, and this makes it happen. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I would echo that. I'd like to thank people at Metro and the city and Carol and our administration office and the State's Attorney's Office. It has been, you know, things come to us here for approval, and it seems like sometimes they just appear magically, like they just happen, but this was a lot of hard work, including hard work by Commissioners Karski and Benega as our representatives on that council. And so I think that we ended up with an agreement that allows us to work collaboratively with our partners but keep kind of the lines clear as to which lane everybody has responsibility for. So, all right, if there aren't any other comments, then I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. Second. Benega.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Barth absent. All right, thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize the chair to sign a right-of-way purchase to acquire a land parcel for project in-house culvert replacement, Highway 140. DJ Boothey, there you are. You appear magically via Zoom. It's good to see you.
This is DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Earlier this summer, we replaced the culvert on County Highway 140, just about two miles west of the gravel pit. And in meeting with the adjacent landowners to get permission to go onto the property for our work, we asked them if they would be willing to sell some right-of-way to the county, and the landowner on the south side did agree to sell the right-of-way. Right now, there's 66 feet of right-of-way. Our standard is 100 feet, so we're purchasing 17-foot strip of right-of-way across his entire property, about 970 feet, I believe it is. And so just asking for your approval to sign the right-of-way purchase agreement.
Thank you. Any questions for DJ? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ. That takes us to item 14, which is to consider a motion to accept and authorize the chair to sign a subrecipient agreement between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Social Services for a grant award to fund the medication-assisted treatment MAT program. Michelle Boyd, it's good to see you live and in person.
Good morning. How are you?
Good.
Michelle Boyd with the Sheriff's Office. I'm in front of you today that we would like your approval to accept some money that's available through the Department of Social Services. Our agency has identified a need to start a MAT program within the jail. It's a medically assisted treatment program, and it's designed for inmates with an opioid use disorder. So as you see in the community, a lot of our overdoses are due to like heroin and fentanyl. And so what we'd like to do is try to provide some support to these people while they're in jail so that when they get out of jail, they have a system around them. I should have got up here sooner because I'm out of breath from. So anyhow, we worked with the Department of Social Services, who has an indigent medication program, that they are able to fund us for the medication piece within the jail. So what will happen is we'll have armor medical care work with the inmates through the medical screening to see who qualifies for this program. Currently, if you come to jail and you're pregnant and you're on a MAT program, we're continuing that program. However, if you're someone else who's not pregnant, we have not been able to continue that, and we certainly have not been identifying people who could maybe benefit from that program. So that's what we'd like to do through this funding. The money, the $38,033, would fund the medication piece, and then they're also providing money to Avera for a case manager who will work in the LINK with people for this MAT program as well. And so that person will do like a dual responsibility between the jail and the Triage Center. And so then we'll be able to have kind of like that seamless care going back and forth. So we think that'll be a really good partnership with this money. And so I'm just here to. be a really good partnership with this money. And so, I'm just here today to ask you to accept the funding for the medication piece, and then the funding to Avera is a separate contract that they're doing with DSS.
Questions for Michelle?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? The DSS agreement with Avera is a completely separate agreement, and the county will not be a party to that.
Correct. We separated all that out, so it's cleaner and easier for the funding piece. We're just accepting funding for the medication.
Cleaner and easier is always good. All right, we had a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item 15, which is to authorize the chair to sign Amendment Number Six to the Summit Food Services Agreement for inmate meals. Warden Mattson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, I am in front of you today for Amendment Number Six for our food service contract. This reflects a fixed meal rate as opposed to the sliding scale, which we talked to earlier this year, and also a reduction in the kosher meal rate by 25 cents. Just for clarification, we did do this as Amendment Number Five earlier this year. We went to the sliding scale. We got our first bill, and they made an error, and we had some communication with them, and this is what we came with as our best alternative to fix the problem.
All right, questions? That's why you have agreements, so that when there's a miscommunication, you can go back and look at the agreement, try to figure out something that works. So, all right.
Motion to approve.
Yeah.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. As long as you're here, Warden, I know that you had an opportunity to move into the new facility last week, and I just wondered if you'd be willing to give a brief update on how that went.
Yeah, so it went surprisingly well. We moved everybody to our new unit control two on Saturday. Staff worked hard, got everybody moved over, and then overnight, that floor that was vacated got all cleaned up, and then we moved inmates from our UC3 down to UC1. So, UC3 could be vacant for the security electronics upgrade. In the existing jail, they started work on that. And then on Monday, we moved offices. Mine's still a mess. But everybody's operating out of the Fourth Street entrance now. Tuesday morning, we transitioned from our existing intake to the new intake. It's going well. I think staff loves the new property room because of how great it is. The new intake is fantastic. That transitional housing area is great. We're working some bugs out. We've trained on this for quite some time, and we've talked about these concepts for quite some time, and now they're doing it, and they have questions. And so, we're just working through the bugs right now. But it's going really well.
Great. Any questions? Well, we appreciate you and your team and all the hard work you guys have been doing through COVID and now through this transition, but excited that the efficiencies in the new building are going to be realized, so.
Yeah, we're looking forward to starting in the courtroom, too, the jail courtroom, hopefully next week. So, yeah. But the staff has been fantastic. They do a great job.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that takes us to item 16, which is to consider an emotion to approve the locations for placement of the absentee ballot boxes for the 2020 general election.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And I did want to say, as I listened to this morning's proceedings and the topics, that I think this has been a good example of governance, just plain governance that's made sense. It's been refreshing to hear. And I'm not saying that just to try to butter you up to look favorably at my topic, although we'll see about that. So, is Elmo working here? Oh, you're gonna, okay. Do you want the order that things come in?
Just a second.
Good morning again. Today, I'm presenting the briefing on the desired placement of the absentee ballot boxes on the county campus. Two spots have been identified, and they're practical due to the proximity of walk-up activities normally performed in the county. The first location would be located just north. Okay, we could just get to that stuff after I'm done talking here. The first location will be just north of the main entrance, the main west entrance to the admin building. And this is shown from the first camera view as taken from the roof over the west entrance there. That is just to the north of the west entrance there. It's yours truly standing on a concrete pad that is already there, out of the way of the sidewalk. The second location is over at the northwest entrance to the election center, and the photo used is used as, there, that's the one, is to demonstrate the location at the base of the steps where the absentee ballot box would be installed. Another photo is of the PDO building and showing the second-floor window that the temporary camera would be installed in. I've resubmitted the items from the building committee on the first day of, that we had on the first day of September, as they are essential to the concept. The boxes would be emptied by deputy auditors several times a day or as the need is anticipated. I've also provided the statute from SDCL 12-19-7 that provides the legal basis for the placements and the uses of the drop boxes. I've had conversations about this issue with IT, the sheriff's office, and the state's attorney's office for their various areas of expertise and any concerns they had with the plan. The concerns that we talked about, they've been addressed. The action today I am seeking is a motion for the approval of the placement of the absentee ballot boxes for purposes of collecting absentee ballots for the 2020 general election. I stand by for questions.
Any questions for the auditor? I know we've had an opportunity to discuss this a couple of times. Commissioner Karski.
Appreciate your work on this, Bob. The only question that comes to my mind, why do we need two ballot boxes less than a block apart from each other? Why do you feel that's important?
Well, that was based on previous ballot traffic that we had last year. People came here, down here with their ballot boxes, and they shoved it in Pam's tax box down there. And, you know, there was even a sign-up for a while, and I don't know who put it up, no absentee ballots, but they went in there anyway. And I saw that on the internet. It was circulating around. I don't know what that was about. And then the other place over there is where we have absentee voting, and people naturally tended to go there, Dean. And so, we thought the convenience and trying to second-guess where the voters would drop these ballots off was something that was crucial to my idea, central to the idea.
Commissioner Heiburger.
So, the ballot box that's going to go over at the voting center, we'll be moving the voting center after all of the renovations we're doing to another location. And so, just assure the public that that box could be moved at the point that we needed to move it.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. And to that idea, I would request that people from facilities help drill these boxes down into the concrete.
Commissioner Heiburger.
A little question. Just the frequency of how often these boxes will be, I mean, they're obviously well monitored. We'll have cameras on them, but how frequently they will be emptied by your staff?
We would empty them every day, at least once. And then, as we get toward that last two weeks, I'm hoping it's not going to be like this. But if that number of ballots seems to be sliding, ramping up towards the end of the election, we would go and check that two, three times a day as needed. I know down here on the West Central thing, sometimes we emptied that box eight times in a day. And it wasn't all just our stuff in there. There was also Pam's tax information, you know, payments for tags and cash in an envelope. All sorts of things wind up in there. And I think that she's been very tolerant of, you know, people putting those ballots in there, but I do see value in separating the two.
Commissioner Barth.
Bob, in your first proposal that was vetoed by Mayor Tenhaikan, did he contact you about his concerns? Did he work with you to try to resolve his issues?
No, he did not. He was acted, he indicated that he was disappointed that I did not approach his office. And I knew that eventually we'd be dealing with the city, because I needed an easement for the county to have a box on what would be some of the municipality's properties. And so, what I had done was, you know, according to the statutes of municipal law in the South Dakota, SDCL in the election section, the city clerk or the city finance officer is the one that is involved with elections for the city, and Tom and I had been having discussions about this. And I was in the information gathering stage when I presented a public hearing, and both times, gathering this information and certainly wanted to move it forward to the city, but I didn't have enough. I didn't feel I had enough information to go. And, you know, I was looking forward to working with the city, because I think that the taxpayers like it when we share projects. We get things done, don't double up on them. And that was my hope, is that the city would come along and have some of these ideas, too. Now, for me to have a complete plan at that point just wasn't feasible, and I felt like the city was going to have some input on it. And I wanted to have plenty of room for that. Like, I didn't come down there with a preconceived idea about everything. Just I had some good boxes picked out, a good spot picked out, and we work on the security details. However, before I even got to the commission here with that idea, the mayor announced that they were not going to allow that to happen.
Chair.
I'm going to let Commissioner Heiburger talk now. Go ahead, Commissioner Heiburger.
I just want to ask a question that maybe clarifies something. This morning, there was a public comment that said that the mayor had not allowed boxes to go up in Del Rapids. But Del Rapids doesn't even belong to the Sulan libraries, so I don't even know if you had a box that was going to go in Del Rapids. And I believe that the mayor's comments were about the city of Sioux Falls libraries.
Well, I think there may have been just a little bit of confusion about that. I knew that Del Rapids was separate, and I did approach them about that. And they agreed that it'd be, you know, it's something that they certainly wanted to have a good look at. And, you know, so that was kind of where that went. And after, I could not put them out in the city, and there's been some disagreement about this, but I felt equal treatment of the voters was something very important. I didn't feel good about having them out in the county but not in the city. And actually, in my estimation, the city boxes would be the ones that would be much more heavily used than the ones out in the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Barth.
So, Bob, you had Kia Warren on your voting task force, right?
That's correct.
And she's an employee of the Secretary of State's office.
That's correct.
Mayor Tenhaikan claims that the Secretary of State in Iowa won't allow ballot boxes. Now, are we ruled by Iowa or are we ruled by South Dakota?
I'm not aware of the governor of Iowa making decisions on behalf of South Dakota.
It was the Secretary of State of Iowa in Mayor Tenhaikan's letter, where he talks about the integrity of the election. I have to question his integrity. I think that he came up with a spin to make this decision to go. What if Del Rapids said, "We don't want one in our library"? Would that preclude Sioux Falls from having one? I think it's a bunch of crap, and I think the mayor should stand back and say, "Yes, I am a partisan. I am not a nonpartisan elected official." And I would also say that, you know, the Republican Party in Pennsylvania is suing to block these things from being placed. Where did Mayor Tenhaikan get his decision from? Was it from Iowa? Was it from Pennsylvania? Was it from Washington, DC? I am incensed.
Thank you for that sentiment, Mr. Barth. I don't.
Do you want me to tell you how I really feel?
And Commissioner Barth, thank you. We don't need any profanity here. Thank you.
The president uses it.
He's not here, and I wouldn't allow it from the president either, so thank you.
So, was there a question in that?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
I'm pretty clear there was not a question in there. Are there any other comments that anybody would like to make?
I do have a little thing that we could show here for the general public. I don't think the public's seen that yet. Could you bring the proposal up with the figures on that? It'd be the very first, right there, right there. And that is the price for two boxes, plus I think a couple hundred dollars for the epoxies and maybe a drill bit. You'll need a new drill bit to put these down. Once they're hammer-drilled in the ground, they're stainless steel boxes. They're pretty tough to bust into. I would also think that, you know, due to the fact that they're not going to get emptied, they're going to get emptied frequently, I just find I have a hard time believing that those boxes are going to receive vandalism. I can't guarantee it. There's no security plan in the world that's going to guarantee that. It is a step up from what we're doing right now, though, folks. Can you go to the next slide? Okay, there. The top left are the ballot drop boxes that I looked at three manufacturers, and those were the ones that seemed the most practical, the sturdiest, and of the best construction. They're expensive, but they're a good product. Can we go to the next, please? And keep going up there. This simply demonstrates the wraps that would be going around. And then the bottom-left one there, the Patriot, that would be the one that I would prefer, the wrap going around. It would identify our county and say absentee ballot box drop, or, yeah, box drop on it very, very clearly. So, when people looked at the box, they would know what it was for. Okay, can we go to the next picture, please? Okay, that was the one where I'm standing on the pad where I'd like it outside. Next one, please. And that, this is the range of the camera over at the Public Defender's Building and where it would encompass. And it encompasses the place where I'm at quite well. It would capture some license plates, but not everything. That's the place. Can we go to the next one there? That is the window the camera would be located in. That is, that was the price of wiring and doing some wire to get to the camera to make it functional, right there. That 580 would be the additional cost besides the box that the Auditor's Office would be responsible for. And this here was something that was presented to you before, too. This is maybe something that the commission has to look at in the future. This would be a more encompassing security system that someday is probably going to have to be looked at. But I'm not proposing that today, but that just kind of came up in the conversation. I thought it fair to put that forward.
Now, auditor, are you working with our IT department on the security?
I did.
Okay.
And the sheriff questioned the cameras, too, the quality of the cameras, and then Monty evidently comforted him. Now, I don't know if Monty is here or wants to talk about that. He'd certainly be willing to address that. The cameras that I got, I mean, when I witnessed the shooting out in the parking lot, I saw the cameras and the clarity of those cameras, and that is the quality of the cameras that we're going to have.
Any further questions for the auditor? Commissioner Benega.
I don't have any questions. I have a couple of just clear comments. You know, I think there's opportunities in the future for us to get a mutual agreement to make this happen long-term. I think this is probably a good trial run for us to make sure that the system does work and that people use the system that's in place. I can tell you that I dropped off our ballots. I can't remember exactly what time it was, but it was close to the end of the process before the election started, and the box that I used was at the election center through the door after hours, and it was stuffed. I think having an opportunity to have that in front of the facility is going to get frequent use, because people don't like climbing those steps, even if there's an alternative route. And secondly, I think it's just going to be more comfortable for the older population to hand-deliver those than it will be to mail it. So, I think it's a good trial run, if you will.
Another thing that I would offer is Drew from the state's attorney's office is out here, and if you had any questions about the viability of the statute that I've talked about, he would certainly be here to answer anything that you might have.
But I understand you've worked through this.
Did, did.
With the state's attorney's office.
The state's attorney and the secretary of state.
Other comments, questions?
I did want to comment that currently Brown County and Pennington County have these boxes in play.
Well, I would agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Benega's comments. I think that, you know, there are a lot of questions about anything new, and I think having these boxes here on county property where it's very well-lit and there's security systems in place will help us to determine if there are other issues that we need to address as far as, you know, maintaining. I think we all take, including the auditor, take very seriously our responsibility to make sure every vote counts. And so, I'm hopeful that this is an opportunity to take a first step, to make sure that we've got, that we've addressed any issues that might be out there, and to see, to provide us an opportunity for the next election cycle, to have the information, the data, to know whether this is something that makes sense to move forward. And I think at that point, our partners will be. And I think at that point, um, our partners will be open to that idea based on conversations I've had with them. So if there are no further comments or questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve the locations of the absentee ballot boxes for the 2020 general election.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Alright, that takes us to item seventeen. Um, consider a motion to approve special event consume and blend beverage license number C and B twenty dash zero four, um, for an event on October third at the Isaac Walton League. Get to move from ballots to marriages, so.
Uh, good morning, Olivia Larson with the auditor's office. We received an application, uh, for a special event consume and blend license which would allow the applicant to provide but not sell alcohol at their wedding. This one is for October third and it is being held at the Isaac Walton League. We receive no concerns, uh, or objections from the state's attorney, planning and zoning or sheriff's office.
Questions?
Brutal.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item eighteen, uh, which is similar. It's also to consider a motion to approve a special event consume and blend beverage license for an event, um, on September twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth at the Isaac Walton League.
Yes, thank you. This is the same type of license as the one just approved. Uh, again, this is at the Isaac Walton League. This time it's for a rehearsal and the wedding, hence, uh, twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And again, we've received no concerns, uh, from any of the three departments that review the licenses.
I would make a motion to approve, but I do have a question.
Second. So a motion and a second and a question.
Olivia, does it make any difference if it's at no cost or there is a cost involved to the person who's applying? I always find that interesting that that's part of the quote, "application."
Uh, the reason I include that is just because, uh, there is a difference between, uh, like a, an special event liquor license where a person is paying for the alcohol at the event as opposed to just receiving the alcohol, uh, for free essentially. Um, because if you're selling for, um, to make a profit, uh, then you do have to have an actual liquor license, an annual one, uh, to support the special event. But if you're just saying, "Hey, I wanna have a wedding and I wanna give my friends and family some beer, um, at no cost," then you can do that.
Thank you.
Chair.
So Olivia, if, if Hy-Vee, who has a liquor license, were to be hired to cater the event, then they would get the second kind of license?
Right. They would apply for retail on-sale liquor license and then, um, they would have to pay for the license. It's fifty dollars for the license itself and then fifty dollars for the, uh, publishing fees because at that point it would be considered a public hearing.
Thank you.
Good question. Anything else? Alright, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Alright, that takes us to item nineteen. Um, to authorize the chair to sign an amendment to the agreement between the deputies association in Minnehaha County effective September eighth, 2020, requiring certified law enforcement officers to attend one mandatory individual session with a mental health professional each year. Carol?
Thank you, commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Uh, the commission has contracts with the deputies association, their union, for, it, they're three-year contracts. We are in year one of that and, uh, on occasion, we have amendments that come forward for your consideration and approval. This one has already, uh, had great discussion and, uh, was brought forward to the sheriff's office and the deputies by Captain Josh Phillips. And I'm gonna let him explain to you exactly what this is and, uh, why this is a great opportunity.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Captain Josh Phillips, Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. Uh, last year about this time, I went to the, I attended the FBI National Academy in Quantico for three months and met with leaders from across, uh, all law enforcement agencies. And one of their big topics was officer wellness and mental health. Uh, there was no blueprint on what to maybe do on that, but it was a topic in any class that I attended. Uh, so with that, I, uh, called our psychological examiner for the county that does all our backgrounds, John Urbanbach, and really hit some ideas off with him. Um, it was something I, I felt passionate about and I, I thought the county and the sheriff's office, we could always do more and, and try to get ahead of the, um, the curve and step and see what we could do to help our employees. Um, when I came back, we met with the sheriff and sat down as a admin group and I kinda pitched the idea of what we have here today. Um, and then sat down with Carrie Dever, who was, uh, a huge, uh, part to this whole program. She, uh, did a lot of behind-the-scenes work, uh, for this and kinda brought us to where we're at today. But, uh, in my seventeen, seventeen years in law enforcement, uh, we, we do a lot of programs with the PD and EAP and, and all that. A lot of it focuses on, um, events that just occurred maybe a day or two after the event. I think this will really assist us in something that maybe would trigger something for an officer or, or a deputy later on down the road. And, and a lot of the studies show it, stuff doesn't just happen right away. It kinda goes over time and the sheriff brings up examples of, uh, a cup getting full. It can only get so full. And I think what we wanna do as a department in the county and for all, uh, law enforcement is really, um, try to get to that early and hopefully we can give them the tools to, um, better equip and, and answer some of those questions they may have or the stressors that they might deal over a long, uh, career. But that's kinda where we're at today and we're hopefully after a year, um, in doing, uh, some surveys with the deputies and the EAP providers of really kinda growing this program. But I think this is a good footprint and getting started and hopefully we'll continue to grow from here on out. But I think the sheriff maybe has a couple additives. I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Captain Phillips? I just would like to thank you for championing this idea. I think it's a great.
Alright.
Opportunity. I think the sheriff's gonna talk about his long history and how his cup sometimes might get full.
Morning, commissioners. Mike Mills at Minnehaha County Sheriff and I just, um, really I'm here to, um, thank Captain Phillips and Carrie Dever and our, and our deputies association for the work that they've put into this. In particular, Carrie and, and Josh did a lot. Uh, Josh brought this idea back from the FBI National Academy, um, had those conversations with us. We know, uh, even the legislature is looking at, uh, improving, um, mental health care for first responders. And so this was very timely and I think it's an excellent opportunity to try to do better with our, with our officers who, um, now more than ever, uh, are faced with, with stresses in their job. And so I, I, I applaud, uh, uh, my captain, uh, Josh and Carrie for their hard work and the deputies association for going, "Look, we know that, you know, we're gonna have to sit down with somebody every year, but it's really a great opportunity to just work through issues that you may be dealing with, you have been dealing with, uh, or maybe that, that come up even during their session." So this is to better serve the public and to better take care of, of our officers. So I appreciate, uh, your support for this. Thank you, commissioners.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Madam Chair, let Gerald go.
Mr. Benega?
I will just tell you that I know the provider personally. I've known him for a long time. Uh, I've never seen anybody or specifically him, any more excited about doing something like he has worked with, uh, Captain Phillips with, uh, not only the police officers and the sheriff's department, but even the families of the participants, um, that have to deal with this after the fact and how that affects them. As I said, he gets very calm on everything that he deals with. But this one, he really, really thought this was a awesome idea and he appreciated all the extra work that Captain Phillips put together. So thank you for doing that because it's gonna make a huge difference.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Barth?
Um, I think it's great. And I know I talked to you a couple weeks back about whether you needed additional staff perhaps to prevent people from getting too wiped out from running pillar to post with disasters. Um, I know that you personally had a terrible thing happen many years ago with a teenage driver killed the night before his graduation, having to tell the family, et cetera. I mean, that, that's tough, really tough. And I don't know if you all know that story, but maybe you can tell them someday. But I think public safety, all of them, uh, need this kind of assistance, you know? Uh, finding, uh, four people burned to death in a car on the interstate, that's rough. And, uh, uh, finding someone that's been dead for a week in a cornfield, that's rough. Um, you guys, thank you for what you do and, you know, keep finding ways to prevent that PTSD from swamping your brain.
Commissioner Karski?
I'm also fully supportive of this. Thank you, Captain Phillips. Just a great example of how sending somebody, you know, to Quantico and that greatest probably academy in the world for law enforcement and bringing those ideas back. I don't think enough people have been around law enforcement. I, I, I have, I've been on ride-alongs and have done the auxiliary police training when I was in another life and so many, so much of a police officer's time is dealt, is spent dealing with people that other people just can't understand. Just, it, it, you're not dealing with people at the best times of their life if you're a law enforcement officer. And, you know, from talking to cops and deputies, you know, they say you just gotta ki- kinda reset yourself because ninety-nine percent of the people aren't like the ones you're dealing with when you're, um, encountering them at a, in a bad time in their life. So that PTSD, and that's what I wrote down too, commissioners, for helping people, excuse me, or helping our officers, um, get through, through those times, it's gonna make them better in their interaction with their, with our taxpayers and with, with the citizens in, in general. Thank you for what you do and what you brought back.
I know, uh, like I, the, the police captain who hired me in my young career ended his life in suicide after his retirement. Um, my, uh, for a period of time, my roommate and a good friend on the police department who, who ran their crime lab for years and years took his own life after retirement. Uh, we've lost several of our own officers to suicide. Uh, and so when Captain Phillips brought this up, all those, all those things, uh, come back to us. And, uh, uh, any chance that we can, and this is a very affordable way to do it, uh, look at the, the mental health and wellbeing of our officers, better serves not only our officers, but also the public. So, uh, I appreciate your support.
Anything else? Well, thanks to both of you for being here and I, I appreciate both of you calling out Carrie Dever too, cause I'm her liaison and I know that all great ideas don't just get born easily. Sometimes they take a little work to get them birthed properly and I know Carrie worked on that, so thank you.
Do we need a motion? I make a motion to have you sign that agreement.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. Alright, that takes us to item twenty. To authorize the chair to sign an agreement with ISG for highway facility design services. Carol?
Good morning, Carol Muller, again. And, uh, before you today is a agreement with ISG to, uh, design a highway facility for us, which is desperately needed. We had a competitive RFQ and RFP process. ISG was selected as the architectural design firm for this new facility. The county will hold a contract with ISG even though the project is a collaborative partnership between ISG and CBS Squared. Uh, design services include, but are not limited to, site selection and facility, facility design. The architectural fees for the project total six point four nine percent or five hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred dollars if the gar- guaranteed maximum price is between eight and ten million, while the total fees are six point two five percent or six hundred and sixty thousand dollars of, if the GMP exceeds ten million dollars. So this has all been ferreted out by the attorneys and, uh, reviewed. Dexter Sprecher from Tegra Services, our owners, are up on this and has done a great job in facilitating us getting to this particular point.
Questions for Carol? Commissioner Barth?
Uh, I just would point out that this is the, uh, the project that, uh, the Conservation District would like to, uh, have a chance to have some input on and that when we do move forward with it, that, uh, we at least contact them to, um, present to us. They do have some money, not a lot, but, uh, thank you.
Thanks. Other comments or questions? I'd like to thank Commissioners Karski and Commissioners Benega, cause they are the ones that did the heavy lifting on the, on behalf of the commission towards, um, choosing the architect and to the commission office and to, um, our team of legal experts for getting through these contracts. These are, this is not easy reading for, so, Commissioner Benega?
I just have one comment. We do have represent, representative from ISG here, but, uh, secondly, this is the same process that we use for the building and the jail and that was extremely successful from the standpoint, it was on time, under budget. And as we heard from the warden, the process went really well from beginning to end. So this is a process that has, uh, been very complimentary and efficient for this county to pursue.
Alright. I would agree with that, so. Alright, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That takes us to item twenty-one, liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner, we'll work our way down. We'll start with Commissioner Heiburger.
Um, this was already stated once, but this next week, month, Sunday night, Monday and Tuesday are the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Convention. It actually, the kickoff luncheon is noon on Monday, but, um, activities will be starting on Sunday afternoon. Um, I encourage you all to be there. And, uh, I believe Commissioner Bender has a part of a presentation or a panel and I also am on part of a panel. So if nothing else, you can avoid those two. Um, but there are some good speakers there and I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. There'll be no commission meeting next Tuesday as a result of that. Commissioner?
What she failed to mention is that she's the president of the state association and has been for the last year and in that position has lifted the performance of the, the board of directors.
I would agree. Thank you. It's been a bit of a heavy lift at times, I think, so. Commissioner Karski?
Um, looking forward to it. Link, just this morning, I signed, I don't know what's going on with my voice, puberty, I guess, um, the notice to proceed, um, for the demolition of the, um, interior of the, uh, building we're going into right next to City Hall. So you will see construction activity beginning so that we can get into there, so, um, letting you know it's still moving.
Good. Other liaison reports? I'm not exactly sure where this fits in best, but I'm gonna go ahead and just give an update. Um, the, I wanna thank the Friends of Wall Lake who provided the inspiration for the life jacket lending, um, facility or sign out at Wall Lake. We were able to, I wanna thank Emergency Management, Jason Germain, he worked to get that sign put together. And, uh, we found out on late Wednesday that it was finally available and, um, and as a result of that, I need to thank the Highway Department and Planning and the Sheriff's Office who all worked very hard to, um, to get that up before the last, apparently based on the weather today, what might have been the last hurrah for summer. I, I hope that's not the case, but, um, I did get an email, uh, that was forwarded to me from one of the sheriffs who was out at Wall Lake this weekend, um, and said that there were a decent number of people out there, um, but several folks, um, approached them and thanked the sheriff's office both for their, um, visibility out at Wall Lake this summer to keep it a very, um, family-friendly place and that the majority of the life jackets provided at the lake were being utilized at that time. So it was all in all, uh, another, uh, group effort that was, um, very successful. So I wanna thank all the folks that were involved with that. Alright, anything else? Alright, new business? Any new business? Any old business that we haven't already discussed? Alright, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.[1784.83]
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone.